...application fees comply with all local ordinances. Number four is the one Bruce, you mentioned on the top of page six. The applicant shall receive approval to combine the parcels of 400 and 420 West Main along with half of the old right-of-way between 420 and 8th Main Street. So that is where that is built into the conditions. Item five, is there going to be any, um, any lights on this, on the proposed structure? So anything like that, they will need to be reviewed by staff to make sure that their dark side compliant and put on fixtures. Um, but then we have an item in here on number six. Uh, so they can either, so because they're adding capacity, they're going to have to add some parking. Um, and so, uh, they can either construct the parking now or the ordinance also provides for deferred parking, which is basically where, um, you would set aside a spot where you could build parking, but you don't build it until you know they should need it. So, um, if, for example, COVID restrictions are lifted, let's say it's two years from now and everything's back to normal, COVID doesn't take long, but being conservative here, so let's say in two years, everything's back to normal and they have, so they'll have a lot more capacity than they have right now, um, with all of these restrictions in place for how many people they can fit in here so that it's possible that they could need a lot more parking. And so they could defer the construction of some of that until a later time. Um, that is something that, that we will certainly look at from our perspective, if that's something that they, that they propose to do.
Do we have any idea where the, um, parking, the additional parking would be deferred?
Is that indicated on the site plan? So yeah, but the first few, um, I don't know if you want to question.
Yeah, sorry, I should've kind of outlined that on there, but it's pretty much going to be where the old buildings were and, uh, um, the half of the street that's being terminated, you know, um, that would combine the property. So it's, it's going to add plenty of parking there. And then I'm also wondering the building next door, so there's overshot parking for that as well, because that will be all parking outside there as well. So there should be, between the two buildings, plenty of parking.
I guess the question is, why, why defer them? Why not put it in parking lot now? It obviously costs.
Yeah, I, I mean, we are planning on kind of grading that out and leveling it. We just didn't have, because this happened so late in the year, I mean, we are planning to make enough parking, um, when we are able to.
So what we can add, uh, to the conditions is maybe just a, yeah, we buy a site plan that shows a plan for parking that's scaled and shows the number of spaces and how many you're going to need to, you know, drive aisle widths and all that stuff. And then we can take a look at the staff and walk the process.
So that might can just be deferred out until?
Yeah, so I mean, they have, if, if their site plan is approved, they have a year to, to actually build something before that, that goes away. A year and a half if they ask for an extension. Um, so assuming that they can kind of get everything lined up here this fall and winter, um, submit a plan to you within the next month, we could be good on it. And then once they're, you know, once they're free to get that done in the spring, um, when the asphalt plan's open, then they can, they can proceed any time in the spring or summer, and then you kind of, as they need to.
Any other questions? And I will, uh, I'll make the motion that the New Union Brewery Site Plan Amendment with the six conditions, including the parking condition, um, be passed.
I'll, I'll support that.
And discussion. Anybody, both please?
Commissioner Ellis?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Chair Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gudula?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Tyler, your, your plan is a pass.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counsel, thank you, Andy.
Thank you. Uh, next up is the King Milling Site Plan Amendment for 222 West Main and 115 South Broadway. And I think we have, Steve?
Yes.
Steve Doyle. Steve, would you just kind of tell us in a few minutes here, what you, what you guys want to bring?
Uh, Steve Doyle, King Milling Company. I've got Regan Doyle from King Milling Company here also. Um, we've had a fair amount of growth the last six years. Uh, 2014, we built a new flower mill. Uh, 2017, we put up about a million bushels of storage. And 2018, we, uh, put up a 40,000 square foot packing and warehouse. So we're kind of, have some growing, growing pains. We've added a few people over the years, so we're, we're getting kind of cramped. So, uh, we want to connect. Basically, we want to build a connection between our building, uh, Main Street, 222, and connect it to our main office, which is 115, uh, South Broadway. This will, this will allow good collaboration, uh, between all of our folks. We're all, we're kind of spread out now, so, uh, that's what we want to do, is connect those two buildings.
Thank you very much. Any questions, commissioners? Andy, would you serve us?
Yes. Did I have a word up here? Um, so this is a fairly simple, um, application, as you said. So this isn't something where there's a whole new building being constructed, um, and that the, you need account for, you know, parking and all this kind of stuff. All they're asking for is basically an overhead walkway between, uh, the, the two buildings on the south side of, um, on, on, um, uh, Quater Street here. So it'll be about 600 square feet. They'll connect two adjacent building. They've also proposed some exterior improvements to, to, to the building and then what we call the hardscape and landscape. Um, so what we're really focusing on here is, um, is the site plan amendment stick where we have the walkway in between the two buildings. Um, so the actual walkway itself would kind of be recessed behind the front line of the building that's adjacent to the street. So, um, there's no setback issues that we, that we need to be concerned about here. Um, the plan shows that they will be lighting, um, at the entryway and underneath the second story connector. Um, those aren't shown, but, um, it looks like they'd be, you know, recessed downward-facing lights, which makes sense given their location. Um, a photo measure plan was not submitted. I don't think one is needed for this case because it's fairly tight kind of interior site, so I don't think, um, it's going to have, um, a big effect there. As far as parking is concerned, um, it would add 600 square feet, um, which, you know, if, if you, you know, do the math, that, that could be two additional spaces based on standard in the ordinance. However, um, one, we allow, uh, businesses and, um, everyone else downtown to count spaces within 400 feet that are public spaces. They can count public spaces towards their, their parking minimum. Um, and frankly, this isn't going to affect the overall intensity of the use. It's not going to add, you know, it's going to result in a bunch of new employees and a bunch of new customers or something. It's just something that makes the overall site function better together as a whole. Um, as far as the landscaping plan goes, um, so they have, uh, proposed new concrete pavement between the two buildings, three-foot-by-three-foot movable concrete planters, just permanent plantings. Um, it looks very nice overall. Um, there are requirements in the ordinance for landscaping, but they, to me, don't really apply to a site like this because it's such a unique, uh, in the city, if it's such a unique use in the city. Um, and the ordinance gives a pretty wide berth for the planning commission to modify the landscaping requirements. So, um, in my view, I, I, it's certainly worth discussion if you feel like it, but I don't, I don't have any recommendations to modify what they have proposed.
Commissioners, any discussion on that? I don't think, to me, it makes a little, a lot of sense, frankly. Okay.
Then as far as signage is concerned, um, we have standards in the ordinance that govern, uh, the location size of sign. Then it appears that what they have proposed will be adequate standards and the regulations of the ordinance. Uh, one other comment I will make here from the city, um, I received some correspondence from the DPW director today who was concerned about clearance. So, uh, it's my understanding that there is a, there's a water main that runs in this alley here, and they have asked for a minimum of 13-foot, six inches of clearance, vertical guides, to get trucks and equipment in there if they need to work on that water main, because that does serve a bunch of those main street properties. And it's not clear looking at the building elevation if that is a 13 and a half foot hundred.
Yeah, we, we all have 13.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other thing that they mentioned is that on the elevation, there is, um, there are some entry stairs there, and do those actually protrude out into that right-of-way?
That, that's on our property.
Okay. Um, so if those are not in, in, in the right-of-way, then that's not an issue. Um, but it wasn't clear on, on the site plan if that was the case. But the biggest concern was, was the vertical clearance of, they have 13 and a half feet, and they can get vehicles in there and they can get equipment in there to, to work on, uh, the underground facilities if it's necessary. Um, and I will go through my site plan review standards again here. Um, it's going to be tighter here, we'll just buy in the, you know, keep going.
Again, let's go through all the way through the app.
Okay. So the first one, uses proposed and not adversely affecting public health, takes your welfare, and shall take into account progress besides the property, uses unadverted property, et cetera. Um, so again, overall, this is a very interior, uh, operational kind of change. It's not going to have a, an impact to me on, on the health, safety, or welfare of the community, nor will it really have an effect on neighboring property. Um, I do like the proposed exterior modifications that I think kind of contribute to the historic nature of the building itself. I think it looks really good. I like the, the landscape and hardscape that they proposed here. So, um, overall, I think that this is an improvement to the site and to the property, um, that will be a benefit to the city. Item B, safe, convenient, uncongested, and well-defined vehiculars, fencing circulation shall be provided through the site. Um, obviously having the second story walkway will help internally and help employees get around between the, the two buildings. Um, it'll certainly be a little more, and not that it's a huge problem now, but it'll be, um, the improvements to the exterior of the building will, I think, make for a more, a sense of environment for people on the street. Um, but otherwise, this isn't something that is going to have a significant effect on pedestrians otherwise, as far as the, that overhead connection is concerned. Item C, the arrangement of public, private vehicular and pedestrian connections to existing or planned to use in the area, does not really apply. Um, item D, removal or alteration of stadium and natural features shall be restricted to those areas necessary to develop the site. Again, this does not apply. Um, I talked about landscaping, so again, it's, it would be tough to apply the landscaping standards, standards of the ordinance strictly to this site, so I think what's being proposed here is, is adequate. Um, item B, satisfactory assurance shall be provided that the requirements of the city of law shall be met, which is addressed on every condition of approval. And item F, the general purposes and spirit of this ordinance and the master plan shall be maintained. Um, this particular property, this use has been here for a long time, it's kind of split between the downtown and the industrial areas and the master plan. Um, so areas downtown planned for residential uses are intended to accommodate them. Um, the downtown is intended to permit a mature residential office and commercial uses in kind of a traditional main street style of development. So modifications along Main Street will certainly accomplish that, they're very much in the character of Main Street. And so I think, given that, it obviously can, allows them to continue to function better, and it's kind of a cornerstone of the business community here. So, um, our recommendation was to approve the amended site plan. Uh, we have five conditions here. Um, and honestly, I don't know that, um, the only thing, I guess, I would request for additional site plan items could be a clarification on the clearance to, so it's stated.
Yeah, make that number six. I guess corners will twice, twice as well.
Yeah, I don't have a, a, a dimension for what would be adequate for the horizontal dimension, but I can, we can certainly just defer to city staff on what that number is.
Horizontal change with, from the two buildings that exist and build. Put your name at the entrance, but.
I don't think it will, because the scenario indicated that, that the only thing that looks like that it could protrude out would be that there's a little concrete stair to the entrance there, but if that's on their property, then your, your horizontal clearance would all be, be whatever the right-of-way is. So the primary concern to me is the vertical parents. So we'll add a condition six and a thirteen and a half feet for parents. And I'll also add it here that they, uh, will, uh, must comply with any other requirements of the DPW.
I mean, you sort of, well, I would be, uh.
Yeah, and so after the site plan is approved, all of the documents get circulated to light, power, fire, I mean, everyone sees it, so if something comes up and needs to be addressed, that's part of that internal review process that happens actively.
Thank you, Andy. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, then I will make a motion that we, uh, accept, uh, the site plan review standards first, um, and then we'll vote on the, uh, the site plan amendment. So I will propose that we accept the site plan review standards, A through up, uh, as is. Our support. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We've accepted the standards. Then I will make a motion that we accept the King Milling Company Site Plan Amendment with the six, uh, conditions, uh, as noted. And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Amy, voice vote, please.
Commissioner, real quick, we're adding the six conditions, that's the.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Gudula?
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers?
Yes.
Chair Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Plank?
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis?
King Milling, uh, site plan amendment is passed, and, uh, good luck.
Thank you, Bill.
Appreciate that.
That last condition, it was the highest.
Yes.
Yeah. Good, thank you, thank you.
Uh, our next order of business is, uh, a public hearing for the Premier Botanic's Special Land Use, 1450 West Main. Um, and is John Allen here?
Yes.
Uh, would you like to come on up and give us, uh, five minutes roughly, what you, what you want to do? Or, and, and or is there a Miller spokesman?
I think.
We have a representative here for us with the company.
Uh, just to give your slide overview, my name's James Allen, I'm a representative for Premier Botanics. Uh, what we're proposing is putting a marijuana microbusiness at 1450 West Main Street, uh, which allows us to maintain and grow 150 marijuana plants, cultivate them, and sell the products therein. We, you cannot acquire marijuana from any other locations, and you can only sell what you produce and marijuana microbusiness. So it differs from the existing dispensaries in that it's, uh, very much like New Union. You make on-site what you sell, and you cannot bring in any other options, and you cannot sell them to any other dispensary. So it's quite like a camp house. Uh, we've been working in conjunction with, uh, Caporac Construction and the other , uh, architects to, uh, get the site plan, uh, together and, uh, have it answer any questions your folks may have.
Would you like to say something?
Please do, Mr. [inaudible].
James Allen is my son. I'm John Allen, and owner of Great Lakes Pavey, and this is a, a new venture for us. And with hopes of the city accepting everything, we feel that we've got something positive to add to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy, you want to walk us through?
Yes, so this is the, uh, showboat wooded site at 1450 West Main, um, on a corner of Valley Vista and Main Street. Uh, it's cross from, um, or, that's, that's not a cross, it's right next to, uh, the manufactured housing community, which is just in the west. Um, still in C3, and so, as you guys know by now, uh, marijuana establishments and all kinds of permitted in the city, we just have a special ran. Uh, the site itself is about an acre and a half, and so they're proposing to maintain the existing buildings on the property that they are, uh, with a number of improvements to be properties surrounding it. Uh, as you mentioned, this would be a marijuana microbusiness, which I think would be the first one of those that we've done here. Um, we've done a number of retail establishments and a rural facility, but this would be the first microbusiness where they kind of do it all under a roof and then sell what they produce on, on site. Um, nevertheless, the, the, the review standards for all of these are somewhat similar, and many of the concerns that we'll be addressing here are also somewhat similar. Um, they have provided a complete application, except for a couple of things. Um, overall, it's, it's sufficiently complete for review. The building does need setback dimensional and lot coverage standards of zoning ordinance. In terms of the landscaping proposed, they have, uh, proposed a, um, pull it up here, a landscaping plan, um, that shows, uh, significant plantings primarily along Main Street, which is, is what they consider to be the front of the property. There's also some trees proposed directly in the front of the building and then a little bit on the northwest portion of the site. Um, there's always a few on the south, I would be the southeast corner of the property. Um, they have a driveway on Main Street and a driveway on Valley Vista. It is my understanding that MDOT, uh, is going to have them close the Main Street entrance here, so they will have access on Valley Vista, but not on Main Street. Uh, they have an interest, I think, generally of, um, helping to, uh, have traffic close smoothly along, um, along Main Street with as few intersections and groupages as possible, helps pedestrians walk on sidewalk, public vehicles move down the street. So, um, it is my understanding at this time that that is what they are going to propose here.
To eliminate it or just block it up?
Uh, it would be closed. I'm not sure if the plan would be to.
It would be to eliminate and would curb all the way through there.
Okay.
And the sidewalk will, because of the way the sidewalk comes in there now, it needs to be readdressed, and then that will continue through as normal.
Yep, so after.
And then the other area will be grass in between.
Yeah, so after, um, if this moves, moves forward, they, they would need to submit an updated site plan that shows that. Uh, when they turned this in a few weeks ago, um, this was prior to MDOT informing me of this decision, so they, they will need to update these, which is, which is fine, it's, it's not a big deal. Um, so they've shown, um, uh, a, a number of parking spaces on the site, about 20. Um, they also have another fairly large parking lot on the southwest portion of the property that would be gated access only for employees. And then they also showed a number of deferred parking spaces, which is what you see kind of on the northwest corner of the site there, and that was my, my suggestion. I know with a lot of these facilities, um, there's been a bit of a parking shortage, so, um, I don't know that I, I would be needing to require them to pay additional area right now, but I think it's, it's important to have.
How many spaces are there that are deferred?
Um, I think about 10. Yeah, 10. Okay. Um, so a lot of the other site, this is, 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 I think, the first one where they proposed to have an actual gated off employee area there on the southwest, which, um, helps, I think, alleviate some of the parking concerns for customers. Uh, because with a lot of the other facilities, they have, it's all mixed together, so the, sometimes the employees have to park off-site, you know, with one of their lease arrangements. So this, I think, helps get more of the activity retained to this property itself. Um, the applicant is, is proposing to follow, uh, wall pack lights, um, so, um, you know, we will take a look at, uh, what they have shown there would be the standards of section 4.4, and would provide lighting, vehicles, and on the building. Um, I'm not sure if they're going to be building additional, uh, plate fixtures in the gated parking area. They certainly can, but it's not required. Um, and so again, this is something where I think if the, if, if, if the planning commissioner wants to have the site plan updated to explicitly state, you know, what that parking area will be used for, make sure that A and all light fixtures are shown on here, um, that is certainly something that, uh, you may suggest. Um, so there are 19 spots on the property, 15 behind the building, and then another Um, signage has not been addressed yet. Uh, that does not concern me. That's something that we always take a look at after the fact, when they get a little bit closer to construction, if it moves forward. They have submitted their letter indicating prequalification status for the state license. Um, and the city has a process locally where they have applied for their operating license, but the city doesn't actually sign up and issue that until right before they open. So if they have started that process with the city, um, they will not be able to obtain that license until after they've gone through this entire process, and then basically ready to open the doors.
Andy, would you go through on page two, the, at the bottom there, the site plan review, the landscaping? I, I, I must have, either missed entirely or I'm not sure.
Okay, so.
I just did the other.
Okay, so yes, they have shown, and we can talk about fencing, so that may be what you're, what you're thinking about here. So they have shown on their landscaping plan, um, a series of their landscaping, uh, pretty thoroughly along Main Street. There are kind of streets, trees interspersed throughout the site. Um, as far as screening is concerned, they do have a six-foot-high black chain link fence proposed that would extend from, uh, kind of the front and then it's going to be the northwest corner of that southerly section of, of, of the building, and that would be where one of the parking lot gates would be. Then it would extend west to, to the property line, then run south along the boundary between the manufactured home park, um, all the way down to the back corner of the property. So they have kind of a, a severe porting of the site is fenced off of the proposed six-foot-high black chain link fence. Um, there are some, uh, existing, uh, evergreens or cedar trees on the manufactured home park property that also function as a screen, but certainly if the planning commission desires to, um, increase that or a request as far as a fence, that would certainly be something that's rolled into your authority. Similarly, um, to the south is property zone R3, and they've, uh, proposed, uh, I think there is an existing fence there, they've not proposed to extend that there, um, but then they will have a, a kind of a chain link fence that gates off the other access to that parking lot.
Have existing fences on the residential property?
Correct. At least that's what it was. So in my report, um, we kind of walked through each of the, um, all the landscaping here. Um, and so this is something where the planning commission and with other applicants that have proposed marijuana uses, you have at times required, uh, more substantial screening between the proposed use and, and the neighboring property, and it's certainly something that's, that's worth for consideration of this, of this application as well. If you're comfortable with what's proposed, that's fine, um, and, and you can approve it, but if you think that a more substantial landscaping plan should be provided between, uh, the proposed use and either the manufactured home park to the west or to the property to the south, that's something that I think the commission should, should use of.
Commissioners, we, in the past, we've always required the six-foot wood fence. Um, and, and looking at the tree situation on the manufactured, but there are openings there, you can certainly see, uh, individual trails in there. you can certainly see individual trailers and that sort of thing. And with the fence being on a private property, the wood fence to the south, there's no guarantee that that's always going to be there. And instead of the, or the place of actually, or the parking, if you keep the black fence for the parking lot, I get that, but I think we should propose that they make a condition that will do the six-foot wood fence, as we have with other marijuana...
Wood?
Yeah, wood. Yeah, absolutely. And we've done that with everybody else.
John, I got a question for John. So the chain link fence...
Yep.
The black chain link, so is that, is that got the slides through it, where you can't see through it, or is it just a...
Just regular chain link fence.
Okay.
Non-sea through fence. Well, I can see it through the parking lot, the employee parking lot, that makes a whole lot of sense frankly for that.
That's why I said...
Just not for the neighbor situation, and in view of the fact that we passed out of all the other marijuana operations, I think we need to be consistent on it. I mean, that's my thought.
I don't think it's necessarily wood, but non-sea through.
Yeah, we say wood, but...
The wood or that plastic, you know, they're only just put right...
You want a privacy fence.
Yeah, so if we just require, if we get to that point where we're talking about conditions of approval, if we require a six-foot tall privacy fence along the south and west property lines, is that what you address?
That's correct.
South already has, and so...
Is it on your property or the...
That's on the other property.
Yes, and the concern is that if the other people were to take the fence down, we don't have any control over the house, so they want you to have your own fence.
Right. My one question would be...
Or if it falls down or whatever, I mean, it's not in best condition, so it's, and it's not on your property. We need to make sure that in the future, 10 years from now, your fence is viable. It's the only way I can phrase it.
The existing proposed fence right now on the western boundary that runs by the trailer park is only proposed to go up, I believe, about 200 feet and then come in at the building fence line. Are you requiring privacy fencing along the entire western boundary of the property?
Yes.
Okay, so it goes the entire way?
Right, right up to the sidewalk.
Very good.
Well, we don't typically allow for that kind of...
No, it doesn't go that far. It's up to the town and the building.
Right, but I wouldn't want it to go to the sidewalk, because we have possibility issues, so we'd have them extend that to the, to match up with whatever the front of the building is, that's fine, but I would not recommend you only pass that.
That's fine.
You can work the stat.
No, that's our, that's our standard.
Right.
Are you proposing any lighting in the employee parking lot area?
Are all existing proposed lighting, Jim, was on the building?
Yeah, everything right now is building-mounted lighting, taking into consideration of light pollution, filtering out, you know, the... So right now, everything's building-mounted, and we did provide a photometric.
Right. I'm just concerned, you know, for safety, I guess, from that standpoint.
Yep.
But if it's not needed, it's not needed.
Anything that can improve safety for our employees will be implemented, so if you do find a deficiency in lighting in the parking lot, we'll most certainly address that.
Commissioners, any other questions? Andy, do you want to go through the site plan review standards?
Yes.
So that would be, let's go through, yeah, please.
Yep, so we're starting about two-thirds of the way down on page four. We have a lot of standards to go through, because this is a special use, I'll have a public hearing. So we'll stop after the site plan, leave these standards for...
Let's do the review standards, and then we'll do a public hearing.
That's right.
We're here for you.
Great. So standard A, the uses proposed on that emergency affect the public public safety or welfare, and shall be planned to take into account to pocket the size of the property, uses on adjoining property, and relationship inside the buildings for the site. So we talked about what the use is here, obviously the building already exists, and so its relationship to other buildings in the area is pretty much already established. We do like the increase of landscaping on the site, we think that that will kind of help fund it into its environment. And then as we talked about the residential districts to the southwest, some kind of buffer we could require, which we have already addressed. Item B, safe and convenient, uncongestion, and well-defined pedestrian circulation shall be provided for, regardless of quantity within the site. So as we mentioned, originally this site has had two, or I guess it has, presently two, two driveways, one of those will be closed, which is the one on Main Street, so all of those traffic for this site will now come onto the Valley Vista. Nevertheless, the overall circulation pattern on the site, we expect to, we may adequate the dimensions of the, of the drive aisles and parking spaces as acceptable, and it appears that the building would be acceptable, emergency access would be available to the rear of the building, so if they need to get back into that gated off parking area, the applicant has indicated all the knock spots back there, so that the fire department can get back there if necessary. As far as pedestrian circulation is concerned, there are sidewalks along the Main Street and Valley Vista, those would obviously need to be maintained, that's what they have proposed to do, and then when the driveway on Main Street is closed, that sidewalk will have to be connected in a manner that is acceptable and meets the city's standards. They have not proposed to connect the sidewalks to the building itself, and we've done that with other retail facilities in the past, we have not required it of our marijuana applicants to make that connection across the parking lot. I don't know that, it's, it's not a big ask, but I don't know that we need to do that. I will defer to the planning commission unfortunately as far as what you're...
Commissioners, any suggestions on that? I don't think it's needed myself, but...
We interpret the, you know, based on the narrative that the applicant had submitted, this doesn't seem like something where there's going to be a lot of deliveries, and so I don't know that even a loading space is going to be necessary, because everything is going to be grown, processed, produced, and then ultimately sold on the property. If they do need a loading space, it would need to be shown on the site plan, and we need that dimension, and it's certainly out of space to do that on the site, although I don't know that it will be a requirement. Item C, the arrangement of public or private vehicular and factory actions to existing nearby streets in the area, shall be planned to provide a safe and efficient circulation system. So with the access all being followed to Valley Vista there, I think that will help improve safety, particularly on Main Street, because you have fewer right and left-hand turning movements on the site onto Main Street, and, you know, with it being fairly close to the intersection there, I think it's, it does make some sense to close that privately. Item D discusses the removal or alteration of significant natural features on the site. Again, this is, this is another reuse or redevelopment of an existing site, and so if anything, I think that, that the overall plan probably increases the natural features on the site, that they propose a reasonably robust landscaping plan here. I don't think that, so this is kind of a, a unique site, because it's on a corner lot, it has what we consider in zoning to have two front yards, has a front on Main Street and a front on Valley Vista. Most of their landscaping focus is on Main Street, which is certainly fine, because that's where most people are going to see the facility from, and there's a lot less room on the Valley Vista side for landscaping, and also to be able to fit the parking spaces and the drive aisles to meet the standards of the zoning ordinance. Item E, satisfactory assurance shall be provided that the requirements of all other applicable ordinances closing requirements shall be met, which, again, that would be a condition of approval, of course, if approved. Item F, the purposes and spirit of the zoning ordinance and master plan shall be maintained. So in zoning, the C3 district is intended to commit a mixture of residential office and commercial uses. The building generally aligns with other properties and what the intent of this general business district is, which is kind of an auto-oriented commercial district in the city. The city's master plan actually puts this property in the manufactured, manufactured housing category, which I did not realize, very recently, you know, clearly I think that's intended to correspond with the manufactured home park that's right next door, but this has been a, been a commercial property for a long time, and typically when really at master plans, when you have multiple master plan designations that are joining one another, you can kind of go either way, and so in the site, given the history of the property, I think it makes sense to consider this, this use to be generally consistent with the city's master plan.
Thank you, Andy. At this point, is there any questions from the general public at all? Yes, sir, would you please come on out and give us your name, or just stay there and give us your name?
I can stay here, I think you can hear me. This establishment would be number what, three marijuana?
More like five or six.
This would be number five or number six?
Yes, sir. Your name, please?
Roger Royer.
Thank you.
And I guess my question is, what is the image that the planning commission is trying to establish for this community, and that's the big C community, not just Lowell? Reason I ask is, I'm coming in from Grand Rapids today, and I noticed the billboards to the west of, well, by that landscaping company down there, the newer one, that has been a marijuana billboard for the last couple of months, and it's now got the, the company that's in the old chiropractor's office, and the billboard says, "Let's light up Lowell." Is that the message that you want to communicate about the city? I'm just asking. I'm not here to criticize the use of, it's a legal thing, but how many of those do you really need on West Main in Lowell?
The planning commission, we simply look at the ordinances that have been adopted by the city council, and we make our decisions first.
I know how it works, but you don't have to give permission to a red one.
If they meet all of the requirements, yes, we do, actually according to the state, so we don't have a choice in that matter. We have to recognize that the ordinances were written by and passed by the city council, so we do have to do what the ordinances say. So that's how we look at it. If, you know, bring that up to the city council, that's, you know, certainly you're right.
Unfortunately, I do not live in the city, so that's the reason I was quiet back here.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
But I am concerned at the general perception of the city Lowell. Is it going to be the mill? Is it going to be lighthouse? Is it going to be the showboat? Or is it going to be the pot capital of West Michigan, when no one else in the county has one of these? No one! Not the city of Grand Rapids, not Wyoming, not Kentwood, not Walker, none of the other townships, the city of Lowell. I don't know if that's the message you want to communicate.
That's actually incorrect. City of Grand Rapids is going to recreational, and city of Cedar Springs is as well. City of Grand Rapids is going to recreational, and city of Cedar Springs is as well.
They, they don't have any establishments.
They're going to be.
Yes, they do. They do, they already do. They always, they even have a grower there. They just opened last, within last month, three new establishments.
I stand corrected on that.
And also Cedar Springs.
But I don't know that a city of the size of Lowell, which is something less than 4,000, right, needs half a dozen of these on West Main within a mile of each other.
I think there's a lot of, like, common sentiment in that regard, but...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I said, I think there's a lot of, I tend to agree with your perspective on that, and I'm not a big fan of, but it's not up to us to judge that or to make that call. I think, like Chair Barker said, it's, you know, a bit sympathetic to that...
Well, take a look at the billboard, this, I mean, driving into town from Grand Rapids, and see if you agree with the advertising on that billboard.
No, I can't, I totally agree with you.
Anyway, thank you for your audience, and I appreciate it.
Thanks for your...
I know your job is not a fun one. I've been in that position before, and I've been in their position before.
Thanks for your comments.
So, anyway, thank you for your time tonight.
Sure. Any other comments? Okay. Planning commission, we have the site plan review standards A through F, and I would propose that we accept them as written. Please, do I have a second?
Second.
And discussion. Andy, did we have any additional things that we added?
The defense...
Privacy fence?
Yes, so I made a note here that you would require a six-foot tall privacy fence along the west and south property line, and the fence along the west property line would extend to the front building.
And what about the west or the south line, does that go just to the property too?
Well, that's also a front yard, so that would go, it would not go at all into the sidewalk. It would go half of your required setback, which would be, I think, you can require whatever you want, the farthest that I would recommend you extend it would be to a distance 15 feet off of the sidewalk.
The object is to give some cover for the neighbors. Any other discussion then? Andy, voice vote for the second site plan review standards?
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Chair Barker?
Yes.
Commissioner Chamber.
Yes.
Commissioner Gugula?
Yes.
And Commissioner Strahm.
Andy, you want to do the special land use review standards soon?
Yes. Okay, so in addition to the site plan review standards, we just went to before, special land uses also are required to, or the planning commission is required to find that special land use standards have also been met, and so the intent here is to, before we were talking mostly about the site, circulation, landscaping, et cetera, these standards are focused more on the actual use of the property. So standard A says that proposed special land use shall be designed, constructed, and operated and maintained to satisfy harmonious and appropriate appearance with the existing or intended character of the vicinity, and that such use will not change the essential character, character of the area in which it is proposed. Overall, we feel like the proposed use is consistent with the area's general ability to accommodate uses like this that have a higher level of traffic. We do write in here, the planning commission must also carefully consider the relation of these proposed uses to the MHP and R3 districts, which surround the property to the west and south. Because this building has been there for a while, it's been a commercial facility for a number of years, you know, we think it'll continue to be appropriate, however, this use may have a greater impact in terms of traffic activity on the site, considering the trends of other approved facilities in the area. Therefore, the planning commission, we should carefully consider measures for mitigation such as buffers to reduce any incompatible, incompatibility that could result in between uses. So we've addressed that a little bit with defense, I don't know if you want to add to that at all, but that summarizes our thoughts for the matter.